Now, kind of this regular workshop meeting in Jacksonville City Council. Before you have a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting, and I would entertain a motion at this time to adopt the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Any comment or the comment, all those in favor signify, I say aye, all opposed. Next, you have adoption of minutes from the April 18, 2023 regular meeting, and you have several consent items, actually two consent items. And I would entertain a motion at this time.
Just to point out for the council and yourself that the planning board of the board, it does say ETJ, but it is not. It is an open seat that does have no affiliation with any of the commissions that Mr. Sosa made a nomination for.
Move approval for the minutes and the two consent items as presented with the corrections of the ETJ clarification.
Second? Okay, any further comment, all in favor, signify, I say aye, all opposed. All right, next we have the item number three, and this is Carolina statewide development request to amend purchase agreement. The item number one.
Mayor, I was going to bring up Mr. McCloskey joining me here, but I wanted to leave this item off. Mayor, this is an item that we presented to the council at the last regular council meeting, and council approved a reduction in the number of units. So we have some of those slides up here in case we need to reference back the slides from that discussion. One of the issues that we want to present to council tonight is the request for a land donation for this property. So Mr. McCloskey is here with us, Mr. Mays is here with us for any questions that we may have. And so at our budget workshop last week, council talked about how we want to be effective in assisting in developing affordable housing. Part of the dialogue that council had during that meeting and the direction you gave to staff was for us to work on a development strategy that could potentially allow us to partner with some of our developers to provide quality affordable housing within the community. One of the concepts we talked about was land donation, another concept we talked about was a revolving loan fund, whereas we could utilize our neighborhood improvement services plan that we currently have in place and either general fund funds or another revenue stream to provide supplemental funding for these projects. So when this request comes in, this came in before we had that discussion, but what our thought is as staff is how do we develop out a plan that would encourage development and give us additional units within the community? Part of the presentation previously was that we have a need in the community in multiple areas, and we know that we need additional housing, so how can we be an active partner in that? Some of our discussions with Tracy and with some of our developers have come out to say that we definitely have the need, and we want to be an active partner, but we also need to do that within a defined strategy or plan. Couple other developers here tonight that could provide some input. Part of our challenge is creating a system where as we can develop, and when other partners come to the table, we're able to provide the same type of assistance to them so that we're effective. And so that's the intro to what the discussion is, and Mr. McCloskey can go any further there, Mayor, from where we're at. We have the same slides, if you want to follow through to any point.
You leave that one up because that's what we're talking about. The tract of property highlighted in the blue, six foot four acres, that's the track we're having active application on. So like Mr. Ray said, we were here two weeks ago, and council did approve our request to reduce the minimum unit count from 72 to 64. We were also requesting a low interest loan of a million dollars, as well as a donation of land with 64 units now. We've amended our request to eliminate the ask for the million dollars. We don't need that, since we're doing 64 units, that's 72. But we still are requesting the city consider participating with us by way of a land donation. I didn't have a whole lot more to say, I know this item was tabled to give council opportunity to get some more information. I'm not able to provide any more information, if there's anything particular, but nothing's changed since I was here two weeks ago. James Mages is here tonight, he's the owner and partner of Carolina statewide development. If you have any questions for him, they can come up, but I'm happy to answer any questions project specific or otherwise, affordable housing.
I have one. The city has, there's a precedent for, you know, land being involved in transactions that we want to support, or being sold at, you know, a very minimum cost or donated. I don't have a problem with that, and I know we all want to facilitate and help along the process of providing low income and affordable housing. Is there any kind of deed restriction or anything going into this so that two years down the road it isn't sold to a private company who's from out of town, and something else happens with those units once they're built? That would be something that I'd be interested in seeing, you know, just so there's some sort of time set on this that it will stay affordable housing for a little while, because if the city is going to be a partner in this and help facilitate it, we obviously want it to work for the long term for the community and continue to meet this need, not be a short-term flip.
Yeah, it's a great question. A lot of people don't realize, don't think to ask that, but yes, there is. It's a 30-year deed restriction, we'll record a, what's called a Lura, land use restriction agreement, and that'll be filed at loan closing when we start the project. So it'll be 30 years affordability component.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Is there any other conditions related to the donations of property in case the project doesn't go through?
If it doesn't go through, the property doesn't get donated, they have to get the tax.
That's right, so we have, right now, we have a purchase agreement that expires end of March 2024. So if we're not able to close by then, the purchase agreement will expire.
Because you tried it once before, right, in something?
We did, yeah, we tried, yeah.
So how often does that come around?
It's once, it's an annual cycle. So there's, yeah, a lot of projects in town didn't get funded the first time around. Two, three, sometimes four times get funded, it's a very competitive process.
Is the approval time January generally?
January is the preliminary submittal, May is the final submittal, and then usually awards are announced in early to mid-August.
Okay, so you'll live by August, you'll live by August, okay.
End of August comes around and it's not funded, we certainly could terminate that purchase agreement at that time rather than hang on until March.
Do you see this happen a lot where it takes you three and four tries before a project gets off the ground? Is that normal, or is that?
It's not normal, but a competitive process. The project that we have underway, Cresfield Point down on Blue Creek School Road, that was a second submittal. It took two times to get that one funded. And one of the key factors here, when I worked with him years ago, there was projects that I think went through almost three times around. So, yeah, it's.
What is the major criteria mark for North Carolina Housing Finance people to do?
Major.
To make their selections.
So they adopt what's called a QAP each year, Off Action Plan, and that sets the criteria for funding projects across the state. Year to year, there's different changes, and there's points awarded for proximity to amenities, funding structure. There's bonus points for certain counties. But it's, it kind of takes a whole look at site location, proximity to amenities like employment destinations, schools, pharmacy, shopping, grocery, services, stuff like that.
Does participation by a local municipality or other governmental entity help? And he mentioned the funding structure.
It does, I mean, we see a lot of, not of our own deal, but we're also a third-party general contractor, and we do a lot of work in other municipalities. We've had clients that work with a lot of municipalities that will bring the land to a deal to encourage affordable housing.
And does the North Carolina Housing Finance today, does that, you think, help in a favorable way?
Oh, sure, I mean, while there's no points awarded for, you know, local municipality jurisdiction, you know, a buy-in, so to speak, from the local jurisdiction certainly would go a far way, and I think, you know, where he's arrived, where I'd say, wow, the community really wants this.
I have a question. So since the beginning of this project, I think this project started under previous, the previous leadership, the city manager, this project has gone through many different changes. So now we're talking no longer about the million-dollar loan, we're talking about the land donation, is that correct?
It is correct.
So why is it changing now?
Because when we were here two weeks ago, part of our request was to reduce from 72 units to 64. By reducing down to 64 units, I don't have the same gap in my sources to build 64 units as I did with 72. So I don't, we don't need that in our performance.
Okay, so now that the number has gone from 72 units to 64 units, what percentages of your 64 units are specifically identified for low income and moderate income?
All of them.
All of what?
All of the units, all 64 units are for low and moderate income, so 60% down.
So how would you distinguish? Because certainly you have a variable between low and moderate. So how do you distinguish between who will receive it for low income and who would receive for moderate? Because one could make the argument, because you're talking about low and moderate, it all could go to moderate, and those who are low income would not receive housing. So how are you going to earmark out of your 64 units specifically? I do believe, like with CDBG funding, 30% of your housing would have to go to low income. So what percentage of your housing would be specifically earmarked for low income specifically, as opposed to the range where you could select all moderate income and no low income at all?
So that criteria is set forth with the Housing Finance Agency's Off Action Plan. Each county has a criteria you have to meet, so there's a set aside for 60% AMI, 40% AMI, you know, moderate county, and some 50%. So at that point, when we submit the application, allocate how many units in each category, and then once the project is built, the management company has their leasing up, they say, okay, we have eight units for 60%. We have, you know, 32 units for 40%, and, you know, we, they're responsible to make sure who they're leasing to, income qualifies for each unit.
So taking a step back, when this particular deal was originally approached with the county and with the city, specifically with the 78 units beforehand when this was first presented, how many out of the 78 was specifically earmarked for low income, and how many was specifically earmarked for moderate income?
So, I mean, I guess it depends how you define moderate income. I always use 60% for moderate and 40% for low income. So with the project that we proposed with the county, again, it was 100% of the units were affordable at 60, 40, and then the county also had a requirement for 30% units.
Okay. Now, since this has now changed, since the last time we were together, my question is for you, Mr. Carter. So I know that when this was first brokered with the county, and it did not go through, there was presentation given to the council to reconsider to allowing a continuance for another year, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct, and that was granted by council.
Right, so several changes have occurred since then. So my question now that I have is, why would, oh, first of all, let me ask this question. Before the deal was brokered and contemplated with the county, was there any other developer, contractor that came to the city to ask the prior city manager about acquisition of land?
Not to my knowledge, and the council or the city staff were not involved in anything the county made as far as an obligation or a pledge to Mr. Mays or to his company. We were not involved in that at all. It was a request, as you recall, it was October of 2021, during the midst of COVID, town center issues and so forth, that they came before council, and this was granted. We never talked to anybody at the county about a $5 million grant. That was something Mr. McCloskey and Mr. Mays may have done, and they have had that pledge. And in fact, if you go back and you look at the agenda item that I've done, it clearly says in there that this, it was represented by Mr. Mays and Mr. McCloskey, that there was not contingent upon the $5 million.
Right, at that time, yeah, when we were applying to the county.
There was no, city-county working together here at all.
Right, it was a separate project, so the 72-unit tract, that was never part of the county's $5 million. This was always got to be a separate standalone, high percent tax burden.
So just for my reference, Mr. Carter, can you explain to me, how did it come to be that Mr. Mays's company is the developer that's looking at this acquisition of land as opposed to other developer that could have bid, put in a RFP? What was the election process for that?
As you recall, in October of 2021, this came before council. The statute says that the council by private sale can make a sale to Mr. Mays's company, or a gift, et cetera, and they came and council considered that. At that time, I certainly was not aware, other folks were looking to make a sale or to buy the property and so forth. But that's where it started in October of 2021, and it's gone through a couple of transitions as you've gone through. And the last one being, well, not the last one, the one before that, was the extension of time that was granted to the March of 2024. And of course, last time, and again, we're only talking here, they have a contract on the yellow and the beige, I'll call it, or orange. That's not a part of the discussion. They have a contract that's binding until March of 2024, period, end of story, no discretion there, and that is bound. We have 78 units of affordable housing that they have in the yellow, and 72 units, I believe that's correct still, of the senior housing in the orange. The only thing in front of council tonight is what is in the blue. That number is incorrect as far as 72 units, because y'all, the council, changed that last time to 64 units. They're just asking that that be made a gift to them, which you can do if you want to, or you can say, no, we're not going to do that. That's totally up to council there. Again, when you do something like that, you start a precedent. Let's say for some reason that Mr. Mays and his company is not successful even with a gift to that. Well, I'm sure there'll be other affordable housing developers who will come back and say, and maybe some in the room tonight, who would say that, well, I would like to have that given to me. I believe I can make something fly as far as some affordable housing. So again, you do open a precedent there, and that's totally up to council on what you do and don't do in that regard. Did I answer your question? I'll be a little more.
Yeah, we did. So with this particular land in question, I believe that the mayor asked about this, or it could have been Mr. Warden. Can this particular land be repurposed? Can it be sold?
Yes, ma'am, this land was purchased by the city from the Warehouser Corporation. It in no way is a recreational land donation. You've heard me talk about that, where you have to, if you sell that, you have to reinvest those funds you get from that in a recreational park, et cetera, close by, that's what the law says. This was purchased as an outright purchase, and you can sell it out to anyone. I mean, if this does not go through, now, right now, again, remember, all three tracks are under this contract until March of 2024. But let's say nothing happens, Mr. Mays, y'all do not grant the requests or ask them denied, and nothing happens. March 2024, that's back in the hands of the council to do with as you see fit. Again, you can sell it, so you, because you're basically, you're declaring it surplus. You're saying, we don't see any use for this. And remember where we're talking about here, this is on the, I want to say, right-hand side of Gateway South going in.
So we have Mr. Covey to bring up that map as possible.
There you go, it's right behind the Kimbrels Furniture Store, et cetera, in that area there. It's kind of segregated by Gateway South from the other areas of the park, if you will.
We don't, we don't have another slide with that, we've got people in the Google or if you see it, but, yeah. On the left, that's Gateway South that goes down towards Marine Chevrolet. And then corset's the Commons Drive on the upper part of that map. So it's, it's over there right across the street from Richard Ray Park.
So with these, so the land cannot be repurposed, it has to be specifically built for this?
Under this contract, yes.
What contract?
For March of 2024. They do not get the tax incentive credits on, I'll call it, and that may be improper term. And March 2024 comes, and the land comes back to the city to do with as you see fit, there's no restrictions. Their contract ends in March of 2024. So you can do whatever you want if this doesn't go through.
And if it does go through, there's a 30-year commitment for the affordable housing use?
On the tracks in the yellow, on the tracks in the blue, 30 years, and the senior mark, how many years is that?
Yeah, any tax credits come.
Okay, all three of those tracks is a 30-year for the intended purpose, two affordable housing and one senior housing.
So are you trying to, are you going to build all this at one time, or are you trying to do it in phases? Correct, correct, so I guess my question is, so you get the land for the blue part, then you get the water, the money, you start construction. What's the, I mean, obviously, I don't know this, but what's the timeframe look like for the rest of it? I mean, is this multiple years, you have to go out for another bid process?
We're gonna, we're gonna have to kind of fall back and come up with a plan.
So how does it work, Mr. Carter, if, say, we give them the blue, they do that part, 2024 comes around, you can't get any more funding? Do, what do we do with the other two parts?
Come back into the city's hands, and you can do as you see fit as a council.
And there's a creek that separates them, is that correct?
That's correct, that, there's a blue line between the yellow and the orange line, there's a creek that runs along that, or a string, maybe a creek.
Yeah, it's a kind of branch or something.
There's a water feature that runs between the tracks.
I think the council, I'm just gonna speak for me, has been asking some very insightful questions to the best of our abilities. As I mentioned before, what gives me pause about this is the fact that it appears to have no oversight. I would, I believe that for it to be a fair and an equitable process, that there should be some type of criteria that is set so that whether we're talking about now, where we're talking about in the future, that if anyone, when we're talking about economic development, when we're talking about building housing that our citizens can obtain because they're making a wage or not a wage that would afford them housing, we need it at the moment. But again, what's giving me pause is that it doesn't appear to be a fair process that anyone could have come forward to either put in their requests, to go through a selection process. And then my next question would be, because now that we are a housing authority, correct?
You are, I cannot just.
Okay, so who would be in charge of that selection process? If someone wanted to come through, if someone came through right now and can say, I have a stellar record of building X amount of apartment complexes in the city of Jacksonville, and here is my record to show, but I never knew about this. I never knew about the land, I had no idea. The first time I'm hearing about the land is last month when this came before council, and I didn't see anything in the newspaper, I didn't, I mean, I am, it just, right now, I have concerns about others that may feel slighted because it wasn't offered to me. No disrespect to Mr. Mays, why him and not someone else? I think about our minority business owners, women contractors, women developers, why not them? Is it a fair process? And if it's a fair process, well then, to whom is it fair that to others it may seem an inequity?
I think the point you're making is a valid, very valid point, because if you go back to October of 2021, that deal was a pure sale. Now, certainly there was a reduction in the price a little bit, but it was a pure sale. But how sweet do you make the deal by these private coming back to the council over time? This is a valid point, I mean, if it was, if you did an RFQ or RP and you sent it out to all folks interested, saying, we got this surplus land, we're offering it to anybody who wants to come and to develop affordable housing on it, because we need it here in Jacksonville, you would have several folks come. That's a, you're exactly right, things have changed from what we were looking at in October of 2021. The deal is being asked to be, and I'm going to use the term sweetened, because y'all need that, the extra funds, and is that, quote, fair? Or is this something that you should just let the contract run under the present terms and leave it alone? That's a council decision, but I certainly understand your position and argument on that.
Because then my next observation would be, if it's 64 now, next month it can drop to 50.
Not without council action, no man.
Again, it can be brought forth to council like it was brought forth, what, two weeks ago, to ask for a reduction. So I guess the one consistency that I'm seeing is that the deal keeps changing. And it's not like, you know, we came, three months later, this has now happened, so we need to make a change. We're talking about at least every two weeks, something is changing. Because when we were together last week, we found out now that the million dollars is off the table. So now we're just talking about land only.
So I could kind of talk about our timeline, at 60, we can't go below 64 units. The application gets submitted next week, and once it's submitted, it's submitted, there's no changes made in the state. So we'll submit it next week at 64 units. So we'll submit it next week at 64 units, and come August, we will find out if it gets funded or not. If it doesn't get funded, we'll come back to council and say, terminate the agreements, because nothing's gonna happen from August till the contract expires in, in March, with tax break cycle, it's January to August.
I'm all for developers and contractors doing business in the city of Jacksonville, because we, this, this is something that we really need. What I also believe is lacking is that we don't have some type of an executive board that can oversee projects, to help look at various different guidelines that will help guide the process. I still would love developers and contractors to go through a process, even though it may be more, even with the land, even though we're not talking about CDBG funding, the acquisition of the land is over a half a million dollars, so it's not monetarily, it's the partial of the land. But still, if there are some type of guidelines that's set forth, establish that as we are making these decisions, it will help this process, that so future individuals, future sales, if we decide to set a precedence, we have at least guidance to go by, as opposed to trying to make an airplane while we're in the air, sailing through the air.
I think that clearly is Mr. Ray's intent to move forward, because of the council's commitment a week or so ago, where you said you wanted to put some general fund monies, I understood, into affordable housing, is to come up with a process going forward. But tonight, you have to deal with tonight. That clearly is what Mr. Ray and I've talked about.
Well, that, that's definitely something that we need to do, is we need to put something concreted here. I think that in this particular case here, we negotiated this deal in good faith, you know, at the, you know, when we did this, when we started talking about this deal, we were in dire straits as far as affordable housing is concerned. We're still in dire straits as far as affordable housing is concerned. We need to get it built, we need to get some built. But at the same time, I understand, I understand where she's coming from, there's got to be some fairness in this process of doing it, so we have to have a process. Now, going back to this case here in point, this is a, I don't know, this is kind of a continuation of what we had been, you know, we, of that agreement that we made in good faith, which we had all rights to do. But again, going back to what she said, we do need a system to ensure that, you know, going forward, that, you know, there's some fair and equitable way of doing this. And I'm gonna lay, lay that at your feet with Mr. Carter there and your staff to be able to come up with something, you know, that is workable.
Mayor, no matter what actions taken by council on this item, we will have that plan and some options that we're gonna present back to council. After our last meeting last week, Tracy's talked about this for months, Mr. Massey's talked about it, we'll develop about that strategy. Hopefully, we'll have a good plan that we can present to council, so that we have the parameters in place moving forward with that process, so that we bring them all out. Maybe if it involves advertising for land, so if we do have developers that wanna come in and be partners with the city, or for funding options, we'll have that to council, hopefully in the fall, Mayor.
And again, like I said, we negotiated this deal in good faith, under, kind of under duress, under social duress, because we had a crisis, and we still have a crisis. Now, where do we go from here? I mean, are we gonna, you know, they've got this ready to go, I mean, they've got the package ready to go, are we gonna just say, straighten the board, start all over with? Again, that's gonna put, at 64 units, it's not gonna be built for years then.
If you guys get the funding, how long does it take you to build? Like, if you get the funding, do you guys start right then?
I mean, can't start right now, right, right then, but, so when we negotiated the purchase.
Everything else is in order, I'm assuming.
We drove it, we, we set the date of March, so typically, it's funded in August, we're usually on the construction, early spring, the following year.
Have you, have you already designed for 64?
Yeah, conceptual plans, but we won't engage full construction drawings till we know we have a project. I mean, that's a hundred thousand dollar.
Once that ball starts, how, how long does it take to get the apartments available, you know, for the public?
So we close in March, and it's probably a 16-month build, and, yeah.
Is that what took you on Blue Creek close?
Blue Creek was a, a little longer than that, because we had some COVID pandemic challenges.
But I mean, the project did turn out really well. I mean, I went out there and visited, I mean, y'all did a great job with it, I mean, I think you guys are heading in the right direction, just trying to make it right, and like you said, and fair for all is, you know, the goal too, so.
And that's if they get the funding.
And then, that's true too.
I mean, there's a good chance, I'll call you in August and say, you know, we struck out, and, you know, now you have, you know, 17 acres back, go be candid with it.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the, the donation of the land to, to make this go forward, so that we can provide affordable housing for citizens in, in Jacksonville.
Second. Further discussion is, and again, I'll leave this on the table, is that we devise a plan as to how we go about these situations in the future, because we know we still have to address affordable housing, there's no yes, answer, buts about that. But when we're talking about using public lands, donations of public lands, there needs to be some type of process there that we, we follow to the T. So this is, anyway, that's, that's all, all I can say about it. Anyway, we have a motion, and second, any other discussion?
I don't believe we should be building this airplane while we're in the air. I think we need to set the guidelines and then move forward. We're putting the cart before the horse. He's already talked about at, at least two years, possibly three.
It's four of us.
If somebody else has to start it up, it's gonna be wrong.
Before his completion, because it's gonna, yeah, that'll be the case no matter what it's done.
May I remind council that the last affordable housing building in Jacksonville was 2011?
Yeah.
It's 2023.
But it's not that we couldn't have done it.
If you're waiting for the New River Apartments to become affordable housing, you're gonna wait for, until now, until the end of time, because that's not gonna happen.
I don't, I don't want anybody to, to think that this is a sweetheart deal that the council has given a specific individual. We have not had anybody bring us a proposal for affordable housing since 2011 or before. So our manager went out and actually tried to find somebody that he, that he felt comfortable with. I'm not saying there's not others, I'm just saying that, that he, we, we gave him the direction, let's go, we need to build some affordable housing. Now, maybe we did get a little bit of the cart before the horse, I don't disagree somewhat with that. But I think we have a need now, I don't wanna wait, our citizens can't wait, nothing else has worked up to this point, we need affordable housing now.
And this is not the last affordable housing that's gonna be built in Jacksonville. Again, like I said, hopefully, the next time we do this, it's gonna be with a organized plan of action, so with that said.
And there was some people who did come forward and talk to pre-ventists, to ministry, to our city manager about the availability of land, and they were told that there was no land available.
All the, all the question.
All, all the question, and all, all those that favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so next order of business, we have a funding request from the First T of Jacksonville, but it's not what we're gonna call it, okay.
Mayor, I apologize, I did not mention to council and everybody before we started, Councilor Jackson is out of town, he had a death of a family member, and so he wasn't able to make it back today, the funeral was yesterday, and I had shared with him that I would, I would share that with the council, so that he regretted to miss this, but he was somewhere else. So Mayor, in front of you now, we have a request that was brought to us for First T. The First T is an organization that is a youth development program that utilizes the game of golf to educate and enrich the lives of our youth. First T has, does not have a, an existing operation in Jacksonville or in Onslow County, so this opportunity was brought to us, actually, Mr. Jerry Allen had presented it to us as staff, and then multiple members of staff joined in a kickoff event. We listened to the program, the, the opportunity to be a partner in this program was exciting, and we wanted to bring it to council so that you could look at it. Part of the concept here is to bring a new organization that allows us different programming for the city and the county. So the presentation involved the school system, city recreation, and county recreation. As you can see in our staff summary, the concept for this year, being FY23, and that's where the request is, First Mayor, is FY23, the current fiscal year, is to basically allow the city to purchase equipment in the program, so that our summer recreation programs can utilize First T. City and county YMCA Boys and Girls Club would include First T within their summer programs, and then when the school year starts back, the First T is looking to begin the school program, the outreach effort, with the fourth grade classes throughout the county. And so what we're looking at is the request to purchase equipment for the city to use to provide for our programming through the year. If you, if you're able to look up the First T online, you're gonna see a lot of different programs, opportunities, and challenges throughout the country, that the First T actively decides that they're gonna be aggressive in helping educate our youth. One of our dialogues before, when we talked to the Boys and Girls Club, was trying to figure out how we can expand our outreach and bringing in partners. So for us, the reason we bring it back to council is the opportunity to bring in a new partner for our summer recreation programs. At our last meeting last week, we talked about youth enrichment and different opportunities that we have. So what we asked in our last meeting with First T, we asked Mr. Allen to submit our standard funding request form. We have a form that goes through Tracy's department, whereas every year we bring in our partners, they go through a, an opening process, an introduction, then they submit an application, then we review those requests, and we determine what we're gonna bring back to the council for funding. That's a normal process we do every year. We asked Mr. Allen to bring that application in, so that's been submitted. For this year, the request comes to council at this point, for next year, we would circulate it back through that normal operating process. So if you recall, on our FY23 proposal, we've requested an additional $60,000 to go into community support funding, this is where that would come from. So potentially, if we fund that for FY24, we would wanna add to that line item, because that area already has the parameters in place for the review process and for the reporting. And so that's our strategy of bringing this back FY24. FY23 would start the program now, and the reason we bring it now is because we already have our summer program getting ready to launch as soon as the schools, finish the school year, but we could purchase the equipment and get this program into our, into our normal operations. You'll see some of the game changers that are presented here, the appreciating diversity and resolving conflicts, obviously, these are things that we want to do in our program. We have some other programs, we're talking about developing our youth, we talk about teaching citizenship. First T has a lot of principles that focus on the concepts that we already utilize and that our partners are utilizing. And being a former board member for First T in other states, I can tell you that, when done correctly, it can be effective. First in, in being a new partner is gonna have challenges, but it is an exciting opportunity for the city, for the county, and for the other partners here. You can see the request, $10,000, the biannual four to six weeks, that goes within the school system, for us, the training and equipment, part of that training is, our staff needs to be trained in the principles. One misconception about First T is that simply we bring kids in and they start playing golf, not the goal, not the function, not the purpose. First, First T utilizes golf to teach the principles, so part of the organization would, would be bringing in the training for our staff to make sure we understand the principles that go along with the program. That's where the $10,000 goes in, to buy the equipment and to support the training, training and equipment that we would need for our summer recreation program. Mr. Allen is here, if you have specific questions about First T, I encourage you, if you have questions about our program.
Who does the training?
The First, First T will have a director, and they have a regional operation, and so we've had a couple opportunities to meet with their staff to talk about how the training looks and what they do. They come on site and do the training here at our facility. So for us, we would have, if approved by council, we would have to schedule through Susan's team, staff-wise, with the First T team, to, to go over the programming and the other steps.
Mr. Ray, you mentioned Mrs. Jackson's office, so did this request have to come through her office?
It didn't come through it this year. What we did is we had Mr. Allen fill out the application, because that would be the normal process. Since we're at the back of the year, First T has brought the organization to the city after our normal process, because we complete that process, we, we start it in November time, somewhere in there, and then we have it ready for the budget process. Since this is a backend request, similar to what we did with the Sandy Run Boys and Girls Club project, we bring it directly to council. So my point being, FY24, we would line up for, submit the application with all of our other community support requests. So not this year, but next year, yes ma'am?
So since it's coming on the backend, the completed application has been submitted, what about any training that goes with the gardening of the monies that we're making sure that Mr. Allen's group are, is aware of the various different guidelines to ensure that with the monies that are being received, it follows the guidelines?
We would have to do that after the fact. So since you, we don't have the training in the forefront, as we work at the agreement for the donation or the contribution toward the organization, we would go through that training as we submit that process. When they do a requisition, then we would go through the reporting back, so then we can report that back to council.
So training is not required?
Not beforehand, no ma'am.
Or is it third or sixth grade, there's only kids that can participate? Is that age range?
So right now, the plan, when, when they presented to the larger school group, high schools and junior highs and elementary were all there. Every school organization that was there said they wanted to be part of the program. Mr. Allen came back as the spokesperson and said, hey, let's try and roll this out in every elementary school and in every middle school, so that we can be aggressive. One of the concepts is, it, it's very cumbersome to try and start in all schools, so the opportunity to start with the elementary schools first, to get the program started after the school year begins, makes it, I would say, it's more accessible to the entire population, so.
Well, I guess my point was, why just third grade? My kids younger than that, I mean, is it just, I don't know, golf, not golf?
Actually, it's third, fourth, and fifth grade. And our intentions is, is we're gonna follow the fourth grader of 2024 school year, so he'll be in the fifth grade the next year. When he transitions into the sixth grade, we'll now go to the middle schools, and we'll have a sixth grader that's been in it, and a seventh grader that's been in it for one year, so then we'll do that. Then when he goes to the high school, we'll transition over there also.
Well, I guess my question was, why not younger kids, is why, why start it?
We, we, we were going by the Board of Education's recommendation to PE school teachers and, and the, you know, faculty over there, that's what they recommended. Now, eventually, I think it could go downward a little bit, but I think the, the mentality level of the kids might not be ready for it.
I'm worried that I got a seven-year-old.
As a former teacher, I can tell you, you don't want, yeah. As a former teacher, I can answer that. Big five-year-olds with sticks and balls, it's gonna be very enterprising. You want a little bit of maturity, so that they can focus on the, the point of the activities as well as the skills.
And another factor, we didn't go into the middle schools, it costs, if we go into the middle schools in Onslow County, it costs me, it costs twice as much money, where I need about 80 to 90,000 this year, I need 180,000.
Is that for clubs?
That's, yeah, middle school, it's 120 kids per PE class, so you gotta get two sets, you know, or six sets for one PE class.
Now, those kids have opportunities to play golf, like on weekends or Now, those kids have opportunities to play golf, like on weekends or if their families started getting into it, like how does that work?
Well, First T will actually also themselves, actually it's called First T Coastal, and it goes from almost to Myrtle Beach all the way past New Bern. And we're called First T Onslow. All our money is handed over to the Wilmington area, like the Boys and Girls Club does, and they'll control the money for us and follow all the rules and the guidelines, and everything that we raise in Onslow County is 100% guaranteed to be spent in Onslow County. But they will have an opportunity. There'll be field trips that they do. First T also has summer camps themselves that they run theirselves, you have the opportunity to do that, and you can pay for that, you know, that summer camp, or if you're not able to pay for it, they have financial aid available also.
Having sat through the longer version of the presentation, I can add a little detail there. The, one of the things that impressed me most about the First T program was that, you know, it's, it's leadership skills, life skills, social skills, all of those things, it's not just a sport. Obviously, not every kid who tries golf is going to like golf. You know, we were laughing earlier, I was talking to some folks here, I'm like, anything with a stick and a ball is not my sport, sorry, just don't have the skill for it, you know? But it gives all children access to try it, and for those who like it, many of them, we heard testimonials recently from the young people who had gotten on teams, several of them had gotten four right scholarships out of it, and, you know, they were from families and neighborhoods that, you know, I know in my household growing up, golf was not discussed in my house, it was do you have shoes for school? That was the goal. Do we have shoes for school, not do we have clubs for the course? But it gives all kids, you know, through the school system, the Boys and Girls Club, our recreational program, the county's recreational programs looking at it, it gives everyone access to try that sport, see if they like it, and if they do, they have a path forward that can really benefit them on many ways moving forward. Golf's not the answer to everything for everyone, but this program gives everybody a shot at trying something that maybe they never get a chance to try otherwise.
Because historically, usually it's an expensive sport to get into, so I mean, it's nice that this is getting opportunity for all kids to, to have the opportunity to learn it, if they, if they like it, great.
And they'll get time on real courses with mentors and coaches and, you know, so there's, there's a lot there that can be benefited from, should the child have an interest in, you know?
Who knows, we may have an emergent Tiger Woods.
It won't be me, I can tell you that.
If you're worried, you're going to teach the classes? They don't want grumpy old men, they want smiley, young, young people.
Mr. Ray, I have a question for you. We're using general fund money for this, so since the, the project did not have to go through a process, is there any support from the auditors that this is something that we should honor and request? Because I'm now wondering, if there's no process to go through, what about the oversight of the monies, and is there any type of after-action report to specifically highlight the number of students that went through? Who were these students? What were the benefits? What were the outcomes? So that we would be able to substantiate this? So what are the auditors saying when we're utilizing monies, particularly general funds, that is not going through the process of neighborhood improvement?
Yeah, great question. And mayor, so when I said earlier to Dr. Washington's question about the reporting back, we will develop the reporting back standard as part of our agreement. So we'll make sure that we're looking at the number of, of kids that we're reaching in our summer program, and then we'll pull back some of the report from the First T once it starts back into the school system and have some of that reporting back to the city. We don't have concerns with auditing these funds. This is similar to any other type of nonprofit organization that we, we go through and that will fund as part of this activity. We have checked with our regional partners, and we have other people in the region that are partners citywide for the First T program. So I think it gives us that other set of outreach. The, the good part for us is, we don't have to worry about, as Mr. Allen said, our funds going to somebody else, our funds are going to go towards our recreation program. So if the schools are a partner, then their funds will go towards all of their schools, our funds will go towards purchasing the equipment for our program. So I see it as the opportunity for us to expand our summer recreation program for a period of time. I don't know if our summer period will be four to six weeks, because we've worked on our program already, it may be a three-week program. But for us to implement this year, will allow First T to, we're not a beta test, but we can start the program before these kids get into the school system. The challenge it's going to create for, for some of those students is, our summer program will not be restricted to third, fourth, and fifth grade. So the kids that go through our summer programs are going to get the benefit of First T if approved by council, and it could be a seventh or an eighth grader, then they're going to get into the school system, and then it's going to be the third, fourth, fifth, and then sixth and seventh. Those kids are going to be the ones that are focused on in the school system. So I think that's a bigger challenge for us. You're going to see a lot of the impact that we'll be able to report back, but I will say that that's, that's why we want to funnel things through, for next year, through our standard process. But if you recall, when we develop out the FY24 draft budget, talk about the fact that it's malleable, right? So that we can bring it back to the council when there's a request from the community to do something that's outside of our normal planning process. This is one of those opportunities that you have the ability to tell us, make this happen, get us the standard reporting, make sure we're following the rules, and we'll carry it out per the council direction.
Ms. Washington, Ms. Washington, also, your equipment, each set is $1,700. With your donation, your recreation department, when I talked to Susan, said she only needed five sets. You don't have to give me $10,000 and then buy five sets. I'm producing your equipment to you and all your training.
And how many kids can y'all handle? Like, how many kids are going to be able to?
Well, there's 19 sets, 19 different clubs and items in a set.
Gotcha.
And Susan Baptist asked, said she thought she needed five.
Oh, okay.
And we'll look at, you know, for the summer, we'll look at 350 kids in our program as a baseline for our summer program. I'm excited to see what's going to happen through the summer, and then to see what the feedback is. But then for us, we would carry that into our after-school program next year, so we're going to maintain that program as part of our regularly scheduled activities.
Any other questions, Mr. Allen or Mr. Ray? They're asking, First T is requesting a donation of $10,000, and we need approval by council.
I move.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? During night, all in favor, 65%. All opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, for this item, just as a follow-up, based on the direction given by council, we will provide this as a budget amendment at your meeting in two weeks. You would need to do that to effectively allocate the funds for FY23, so we'll put that on that list. You'll just recognize it'll be as part of that amendment.
Thank you. First, second, Mr. Washington. Let your honor, Jerry. Actually, I have item number five, it's the Old State, North State Baseball.
Mayor, we have an exciting opportunity that we want to present to council. With us tonight, we have Arlen and Eli Patino. They are local entrepreneurs that have decided they want to try something new and bring a new opportunity to Jacksonville. So for us, that's exciting, because not only do we have-
You're talking about the manager, you need to hold it down, but please, please do that.
Not only we have the, an opportunity to create something new in our community, we also have the opportunity for a new partnership. And so I think those two things in itself are very exciting for us. So they came to us, actually, originally, they spoke to Commissioner Bennett, and Commissioner Bennett called and said, hey, I think you guys need to, to talk to the Patinos because they have an opportunity that may be exciting. So then we were able to sit down together, our team, and they pitched the concept of the Old North State Baseball League. It is a summer college baseball league that they draft their teams. Currently, I think there are 15 teams in the league. I, I hope you've had a chance to look at, this is the website, we, we captured this on the website. But there are 15 teams across North Carolina that operate during the summer. The reason they came to us is, they would like to start a 16th team, bring it to Jacksonville, and we decided, we have this fantastic field located at Jack Emmett, would you like to play baseball there? And so we presented the concept to them, back to them, they gave us some opportunity to look at, and so we've developed an opportunity where we can bring summer college baseball to Jacksonville. The Old North State League is looking to expand, so whereas they have 15 now, they're trying to expand to up, upwards of 30 teams, but they want to have three divisions within North Carolina, a Western, Eastern, and a Central Division, and they want each division to have a number of teams so that they can play regionally and then come together at the end of their season for their championship. For us, we're looking at potentially having teams in, in Goldsboro area or in Kinston area, potentially it could be New Bern. We have that opportunity, have a regional travel. I, I think for our team, part of the excitement is, not only do we have a local couple that want to do this and invest back in the community, we want to be able to showcase another viable amenity for the community. As we talk about our 400 acres and we talk about tourism and providing services, this concept came at a great time for us, because we want to see how the community responds to baseball being here in Jacksonville. And Jack Emmett, we have a field that has the, the specs that they would need. I think we're, what'd we say, 350 down one line, really deep down center? So the way that the stands set out currently, the way that the, the parking lot sets up, the partners that we have in that area allow us the opportunity to bring this to the council for an option. So these are the teams that currently call the Old North State League home. The Patinos have assured us that we would have an equally interesting name once we get to this point, but what we're bringing to the council is a concept of, could, do, do we think this is a good idea? And if so, then we would present a lease agreement to the Patinos to bring this Old North State League baseball team to Jacksonville. Their goal is to have the agreement in place, get to work now, then they would start playing games next summer, because they have to draft their players. I mentioned the college kids that, that would formulate their team, they would pull athletes from local colleges, and then that creates a different level of energy. So if we have someone that may be a pirate, there's got to be at least one good East Carolina baseball player right now, maybe they would draft that person. Maybe there's not, Dr. Washington, maybe there's zero, I don't know. But we would bring those, those athletes here, and then they work under the operation of having host families. So as a host family member, you would house one of those 25 or so team members that they have, and that creates a little more energy for us in the region. And so think about the concept, where all of a sudden we're all wearing our Jacksonville something shirts, and we're traveling around to see our team. We're excited. So these are the teams that are in the mix now, and then just so council knows, this is Jack Emmett. You'll see, we're very confident, Jack Emmett's amazing. Now we want to utilize this field space. You can see the dimensions, it is a phenomenal field. We just so happened to capture the parking lot of the school system here. You know, we have the parking lot down below over here, and we have some other options. So we've laid out this design, working with the Patinos, to maximize that space, to create plenty of seating capacity, to create a food and beverage area, and then to create the opportunity so that they could play. You'll see the, the orange areas on the, the first base and the third base sides, those are for bullpens. Currently, we do not have bullpens at the location, there's some extra bleachers that we would add there. We have a strategy, if the council says this is something we want to move forward with, we want to present to the TDA to be a partner, to help us do some of these improvements at the stadium, so that we can utilize additional expansion at the stadium to make it a better complex. For example, we want to ask the TDA to help purchase some bleachers. These will be modular, so that we can utilize those bleachers throughout the community. Anthony's teams looked at securing bleachers that are removable with a standardized trailer and a hitch, so we would use these bleachers this year for our Beirut Memorial Celebration, for any other celebrations that we may have, we would have, we would utilize these options. That's how that modular concept works. We predict that it's going to be fantastic, and we're going to have a lot of turnout, and people are going to love it. So we have some concepts in play where we'd be able to expand that, should we get greater interest from the community. So there will be some, some challenges in the area, but field space-wise, I don't think you're going to find a field in better condition to play ball today than Jack Emmett. And, and that's, when the Patinos went to visit the field, that's the first thing they came back with was, this field is in excellent shape, and that's a credit to, to Michael LaCory and his team, that we've been maintaining it, mayor, so that they would show up and ask us to play ball.
They'll, they'll come.
Well, that's kind of the concept, and we didn't want Kevin Costner or somebody to show up, we wanted the Patinos to show up, because we like, we like local people to come and, and do the project, so. So I left that here, mayor. What we're asking council is informally to, to ask us any questions, and then to bring back this agreement in two weeks, so you can review it, to allow them the opportunity to be there at the field. That's all I know, mayor, and the Patinos are both here, so you can ask any questions and then.
Entertainment, baseball.
Kind of lucky, you go to Morehead or go to Kinston, it'd be nice just to go down the street.
Greenville just announced a, they're participating in this. They just, they just signed an agreement that was on Facebook yesterday that I saw. Very, very happy that you made that decision to.
And one of the great things about this is that obviously you have the Moreton City Marlins, you have the Wilmington Sharks, and me being a Marine that used to be stationed here at Camp Lejeune, I would travel to Kinston or wherever it was to go see a baseball game, and obviously, these places are over an hour away. The great thing is that this will bring a family-friendly and affordable option for entertainment in the summer for everybody here in Jacksonville. And you won't have to drive an hour plus to go see, you know, great athletes play baseball. And Jack Emmett Field is an excellent place, we visited it several times with the league CEO as well, he thinks it's a great, great location as well.
One of the strategies, mayor, that they've, they've offered up as a possibility is, if council says yes, and we're able to pull this project together, is during this season, potentially, two of the other local teams could come up and play an exhibition game, and we could potentially have that opportunity. And then another concept that we've discussed with them is, throughout the year, maybe there are other activities that they would like to host at Jack Emmett, so we could maximize the utility of this field. Those are, those are bigger picture ideas, but it's ideas that they've brought to the table of, how do we make it effective here in our community? And as Mr. Patino said, to make it an affordable option for our citizens to, to go out and have some entertainment.
And just as a vision, so you guys know, anyone that's been to a minor league baseball game, not major league, but minor league, you understand that there's an entertainment concept to all these games. So our primary thing with baseball would be, obviously, baseball is a focal point, is the main draw, but is to essentially have families be able to come there for a couple hours. Great, you know, have a chance to make some great memories, have a great time, and say, hey, when can we go back to this game again? When can we go see the Jacksonville, you know, fill in the blank, play the next game? And because it was a fun for, fun environment for the whole family, so, yeah.
Have you, have you, I know you've done a pro forma of some sort, what are you looking at for ticket prices? I just, I'm not going to hold you to anything, but just generally.
Yeah, about 10 bucks, 10 buck century. Yeah, 10 buck century, and that's basically what we're working off on, on a pro forma, so.
Discount for families, you know, young kids and stuff.
Yeah, so they're, they're, yeah, they're definitely giving discounts, definitely like the host families, he, like Mr. Ray had mentioned, host families would get season passes, because, you know, they're, they're helping us out, you know, they're housing these young adults for, you know, up to two and a half, three months, and so their whole family. So, you know, think of a host family as a, a couple that has two, three, four kids that are in sports, you know, could, have a good mentor around, that's an ideal host family. And then obviously, sponsorships would also get season tickets. So there's a collaboration of sorts to make this all come together and, you know, be a success.
How many, how many games during the season?
Right now, there's 16 league games, and there's a couple exhibition games. So the average right now is about 20 games. With the addition of more teams in Eastern North Carolina, we expect that to go up to closer to 25 over the course of several years.
So how many home games would you have?
25 home, sorry.
Oh, that's true.
So I'm sorry, 25 home games, about, right now about 32 in conference games, about 20 at home games, so 40 games total, yeah.
Okay.
Right now, as the league stands, yeah.
And as a summer league, mayor, the, the beautiful thing there is, when you string out longer seasons, let's say, for example, Major League Baseball, 162 games, you typically lose attention span. And so in this concept, you have summer ball that- And so in this concept, you have summer ball that brings groups together, and then as the summer's over, their league season is wrapping up, so they're wrapping up that season, and then we go back to our normal operations. You'll see in the draft agreement, Mayor, that we'll work through the project so that we maximize their opportunities. And then long-term, what our goal is that we've talked about is as the crowd fan base grows, that they have other opportunities, and if we delve into anything else in our recreation property, then potentially, we have a future tenant for a facility here. And so we're excited about the opportunity. If nothing else, for one good season of summer baseball, and then see where it goes from there.
Sounds good.
Good luck.
Well, if you're good, Mayor, we'll bring that agreement back. Our goal is we'll get our draft together. We'll get it back to the Patinos so they can bed it, and we can get it ready, and then we'll have it presented on the 16th in our next meeting.
Good?
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Recreation Land update. This is dealing with Williamsburg property.
Mayor, we're excited. We've got this, we're excited because we get to present this update back to the council and to everybody that's paying attention. We gave you sort of the concepts that we've gone through inside of our staff summary, but we're at a place now where we're ready to select the firm, and we're asking council to review it. So Anthony's going to drive through where we're at and the next amazing steps to make something happen here in Jacksonville.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present. Before I get started, I wanted to mention that this is not necessarily my presentation. This is a presentation from a group of folks who's worked very diligently over the past several months on this project. And so even though I'm the talking head tonight, there are a lot of other folks like Mr. Ray and Mr. Massey and Wally Hanson and Gil Maids, even though unfortunately, she's no longer a city employee anymore. Michael LaCory, who's here, and Susan Baptist. We've had a great team working on this, and I think we're heading in an excellent direction. So I hope you feel the same way as we go through this. The opportunity and the challenge that we face right now is that of the blank page. And so we have 400 acres out here that has just a ton of potential. But the question is, how do we best go from something like this to a master plan that's well thought out, meets the community's needs, to, you know, some renderings that we sell to the public and hopefully get funding to construct, and then ultimately end up with nice things? Now, these images are not intended to represent actually what we're going to do, but these are just sample images to give you a vision of kind of where we're headed with the process. So to help get us to where we're actually building and using a facility one day, we started with a request for qualifications. This is a competitive process where we put out an RFQ and solicit interest from, you know, engineers and architects who have certain skills that we're looking for. And you can see on the left-hand side, I'm not going to go through all those, but those bullet points are what we're considering Phase 1 of what's going to become a larger master planning and design process for getting us to construction and of course, enjoying those amenities one day. We received five responses, and these were excellent responses, so we're very happy about that. On the day that they were due, I was really concerned because we didn't have anything. But then come 4 o'clock that afternoon, they all piled in at the same time, so that was a good relief. Moving into the selection process, we first look at responsiveness and make sure that they hit all the points that we asked for. Unfortunately, one of the firms had to fall off at that point because they weren't going to meet the DBE requirement that we had asked them to, and so they were no longer considered. But then we proceeded through a staff review of all the proposals where we ranked, scored, and ranked them, you know, according to our individual assessment. And then we moved on to a panel interview, and in fact, Mr. Warden joined us for those panel interviews that were done over a two-day period where we spent a number of hours with each one of these groups. Got to know them pretty well throughout that process. Once we got to the end, the great thing was we all came to the same consensus. So there was no arm wrestling or fighting or hair pulling, having to come up with a solution. We came to a consensus, and it was actually very smooth and very easy. And we are going to recommend to the council and to the TDA that we execute a contract with this firm that we're recommending, hopefully in two weeks. Not tonight, we're just giving you an update, but next week, we'll hopefully, or next meeting, we'll hopefully ask for council action. So the firm that we're recommending, the prime is McAdams, but there's a number of components. The McAdams Group, they do a lot of landscape architecture, engineering, you know, all the heavy technical design stuff. But then we've also got a company called Victus who's part of the team, and they really do all of the market assessment, the needs assessment, you know, making sure that what we build has a demand and fits our needs, okay? And so they're going to take us through a process of evaluating what we have locally, what the demand is regionally for sports tourism, and calibrating our concept to target those needs. Dan Dodd there, he's a field expert. I don't know how well you can see that, but he designed sports fields. And that's, no two ways about it, that's going to be part of the process. And then Charles Boney, he's an architect out of Wilmington that we've worked with in the past. And Sarah Burrows, she's actually worked with us on numerous occasions. She's a welcome addition to the team. She's going to be assisting with the public involvement process and then also assisting as we go through the permitting process to get all of our designs approved by the appropriate parties. So Sarah actually helped with Jacksonville Station. She was the prime contractor on the Lejeune Trail. All the landscaping that you see on Jacksonville Parkway and in other places that DOT is funded, she's designed all of that. So she's as close to local as you can come without actually living in Jacksonville. They showed us some pretty pictures, which were great. They have experience with sports complexes. Not going to go through these. Some are more local than others, but it just gives you an idea of the range of capabilities that they have. Indoor, outdoor, sports-related, recreation-related. See, we've got ECU's on the top right-hand side there. Of course, then, you know, we have Clemson on the top left.
NC State.
They tend to stay away from that, so. Actually.
They need external help.
I believe some of their architects are NC State grads, so. Stadiums and events, you know, we were just talking to the Patinos, so that's within the realm of possibility. You know, we're thinking big. This is a generational investment. They have the capability to do all of this. And then I also mentioned that Sarah is an excellent local resource, and she's very talented at community engagement. This, we feel, is a cornerstone piece of the decision-making and design process because we don't feel that the project is going to be successful without buy-in. And we're not going to get buy-in unless we talk to people, particularly in their environment. So we're not asking them to come to City Hall and meet with us in some workshop meeting. We're going to them, and we're talking to them, and environments like you see in the center there could be national night out. It could be a number of different ways that we engage with these folks, but we want to do it in a meaningful way. We're also going to do a survey that's distributed to all city residents that we can contact. And no two ways about it, there will be a lot of engagement with our Recreation Advisory Committee, the TDA subcommittees, as well as the Subcommittee for the Recreation Land, and of course, the City Council. So they've got a really good strategy here, and we're going to continue to calibrate that as we move forward. Another great thing about having Victus onboard, as well as other members of the team, is that we know that the project is not going to be successful by just hanging the financial burden on the general fund. We've got to come up with more innovative ways to fund this, and these folks have done it before. So we're hiring their expertise to come here and help us figure it out. The text, oh, well, it's much larger on that screen, but you can see that the strategies that they've used in the past, public-private partnerships, you know, that's kind of the wave of the future. It's actually kind of the wave of where we are today for a lot of different types of development. Sale of commercial real estate. So do we sell a piece of the property for a private developer to build something that's compatible with what we're trying to do on the rec land? And then use those proceeds to build some of our capital infrastructure. I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but it's, you know, it's an innovative idea. Corporate sponsorships. Mr. Ray said that he's going to go get us some money, right? Northrop Grumman and all those heavy hitter military contractors, and then grants. You know, grants are always a good opportunity, and as you know, we've been very successful in getting grants in the past, so. As far as the team goes, we felt that they were the most well-rounded. They engaged with us, I guess, in the most meaningful way is a good way to describe it. And having those partners that we've worked with in the past really gave us a level of comfort that we were looking for. Moving forward, this is the schedule. It's aggressive, but it's reasonable. Long story short, in about seven months, we hope to have a master plan for the council to consider. Now again, along the way, we're going to give you updates so we don't end up in left field. But seven months is pretty aggressive, and then once we get to that point, we'll figure out where to go. You know, do we start immediately into design of all of it? Do we break it into phases? Do we use this contractor to do a portion of it and then put it back out for bid to see if there are other people that can help us with like public-private partnership? We don't know what the strategy is, but this process is going to get us to it when we're at the very end. Next steps, so we're negotiating the contract now, and in fact, we met this afternoon and talked about some of the details and hope to have that on the agenda next meeting. Of course, it says council and TDA. TDA, of course, because we hope and we believe that the TDA will be a funding partner on this particular contract. Ideally, we would execute in May. It's going to be a bit of a stretch. It might kind of drift into June, but by certain, we want to get it kicked off in June. You won't see a whole lot of activity immediately after that kickoff, but once we get our feet under us, we're certainly going to go forward into the public involvement phase. We really want to do the public involvement phase while it's warm outside, people are outdoors, and we can get in front of them. So again, this is not my work. This is the work of the committee. I'm just one of the members, but I think we've done an excellent job. We're pointed in the right direction from my perspective, and hopefully we'll be the same. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, but ideally, we would see you again in two weeks with the contract.
Mr. Prince, out of curiosity, did we have any architectural firms of color to apply for this or submit a request for proposal?
There were no DBE prime contractors, no. Each one of them that we considered, you know, past the one that was initially disqualified, met the city's goal for DBE participation. They either met it or planned to exceed it. And frankly, I'll tell you, that's a challenge for this region is getting DBE prime contractors.
So how do we mitigate that? Do you cast your net wider into areas where those individuals or firm companies are available?
Well, we spent a lot of time connecting with every single person. I mean, I can't tell you how many emails I sent out directly to as many firms as I knew, as many tourism contacts that I knew. In fact, the state tourism director grabbed it and was sending to people as well. We've got his interest because this is an exciting project. It's really kind of an innovative project, too. So I say that we went probably as far as we could, you know, given the time that we had, to reach as many people, but there's always other opportunities. So if you know of any, definitely take a look at that and roll that into our processes.
I think the last one we used was Grant Huberman.
Center for Public Safety.
Yeah, our former mayor Harvey Gant and Charlotte Pitts, architectural firm. And as a matter of fact, he graduated from Clemson.
Right on.
Yeah, Mayor, these were some very talented teams, and when we went through that interview process, Mr. Warden was with us, which was fantastic because we had him as a member of the Recreation Land Subcommittee and a member of the TDA. And so to be able to go through that process and the interviews, there was so much talent on those teams from multiple areas that we knew anything we could bring back to council would be a win. And the great thing for us is the vision's already set for the community by looking at the commons property, seeing where the commons started and where we're at now is incredible. And our goal is, we want to do something over the next 25 years that can make people as proud as what we have now in the center of our community. Back to a couple of those slides where you see the opportunities, the proposed building plans for what you could see in the city. As we go out to the citizens and start asking, what do you want to see? And we complete that needs assessment. If we start showing them some of these concepts that other people are seeing in their communities, I think we're going to see excitement. We're going to see the opportunity of, man, we can make this happen. And so bringing on a team that not only does the needs assessment, not only has the ability to look at the market analysis, but has the ability to help us with a funding mechanism? Because we're talking a big project over time. You know, where Anthony mentions the opportunity to have a partner come in, imagine having a partner come in and build housing right next to a stadium complex or a five or six soccer field complex. Having the access to the water on the back of the property that a lot of us don't even think about, but that 150 of wetlands can be maximized for so many opportunities that are natural space. I think people are going to be excited in so many different functions. Mr. Warden said before, we need to be ready to kick off stages and phases of the project. In seven months, if we bring back a master plan to the council, you're going to be able to decide which phases we focus on, and we're going to utilize their team to give us strategies for how we can secure success and make this overall something for our community to be proud of. So we're just really excited.
Any other questions, Anthony?
Not a question, just a comment. I'm really glad to see a strong multi-disciplinary team in place, and it is key, I think, Mr. Ray hit the nail on the head, that they've got experience doing this and doing it successfully in other communities, and they're familiar with creative funding options, you know, that, you know, been involved, loosely involved with some projects where, you know, commercial property was sold as part of the master plan for funding and things like that. That thinking outside of the box is going to get us a lot farther down the road, so glad to see that.
And you'll have the opportunity to meet them soon enough. Hopefully, we get them under contract, and as soon as we start the engagement process, each one of you will have the opportunity to meet them individually, and we'll be seeking feedback, of course.
Thanks, Anthony.
Thanks, sir.
Next is item seven. This is the resolution of pertinent opioid funds.
Mayor, I'll just tell you, we bring this back to council because, you know, we've talked about how we're going to move forward with the opioid funds, and I just want to tee it up for, we're at a place now where we have the opportunity to begin this discussion, and so Chief Yonero has put together this resolution utilizing some of the work that the SOAR Committee has already worked on, and then he added in the restrictions for the opioid funds. If you recall, a lot of the things that we talked about before, we're talking about how we could maximize these funds. Well, part of what Chief's presenting is based on some of the requests that we've received in the community. So it's good for us to have this dialogue at this point, so you can look at it. We're not necessarily asking for that action tonight, but if you take action tonight, you can. If not, we're going to bring it back in two weeks for you to consider the full resolution.
So I thought I'd talk a little bit about what the history was. In March of 2017, the Police Department and Legal Staff submitted a resolution that the council approved to enter with other cities and counties across the state to pursue legal action against a number of companies for the opioid, the devastation that opioid did in the city of Jacksonville. The city signed a statewide in, in September 2021. We signed a statewide MOU for, with some of the manufacturers of opioid. And then a second wave came in in March of 2000, or 2023. That was the second wave of funding, another group that was sued. So altogether, the, the city received about $1.1 million. But part of that resolution has to do with how that money is spent. And so really, there's two ways, one, or three ways, actually. There's one way to take a list of strategies, and that was included in your packet. Talks about 12 or 13 different strategies that are pre-approved. So the city could enter into a number of different strategies, and we'll talk about those in just a minute. They can do a, a comprehensive plan, which is what the SOAR team came up with. And so they can authorize funding based upon that comprehensive plan. And the third option has to do with research and development, which doesn't really fit with the city. But obviously, the city could contract with a college or, or some other entity that could provide funding for research and development as far as opioids. And so currently, the city has about $129,000. The first settlement was $611,000 over an 18-year period. The second settlement was 489, which means that both settlements are about $1.1 million over the next 18 years. And so for the next 18 years, we'll get a set amount every year. Now, the first and second settlements don't include some other companies that are currently in litigation. So this number may change over the next couple of years. And so what we're suggesting is, is looking at three options at this particular time. The first option would be Onslow Outreach. Currently, we have an MOU with them to help us provide for transportation and application fees for long-term care. And so a part of that money, roughly $10,000, would go into those, those costs. Currently, if we find somebody that comes out of Dicks or comes out of the hospital that, that is looking for long-term care, some of the obstacles that we face are, one, the application fee, because the application fee is not, is not paid for with either Medicaid or Medicare dollars, insurance dollars. So the person has to come up with that themselves. Typically, it can be anywhere from $300 to $500. The second part is, is transportation. And obviously, we've been using some of the funds to move, move folks from the city of Jacksonville to these other long-term treatment centers, as far away as Asheville, as far away as Florida, if we can get them into some of those, those treatment centers. So that $10,000 would help us sustain that program for another year. The rest of the money would go toward an outreach person at the, at the soup kitchen and with the shelter. It would be more of a daycare, and so they would focus on addiction. So a number of folks come through the outreach that have addiction problems. So this, this counselor would provide services for those folks and hope address some of those addictions. So that would be the first option. Second option would be the Police Department and Fire Department respond regularly to hotels and motels for Narcan. And so what we would do is train the hotels, and this would put a Narcan kit in every hotel in the city of Jacksonville. And so if, if somebody is having some type of opioid reaction, then the hotel staff would give the Narcan before we even arrive. So we would provide that as, as part of that program. And the third is, is $20,000 to United Way. And what that would do is look at funding their, they have a part-time person that's working for reentry right now. This would bump it up to full-time, and that would give them some opportunity to provide addiction services for folks that are re-entering in the community, which equates to about $71,000. It's not the whole 129, because we started receiving funds back in 2021. What we're gonna do is make sure that, that, that we have funds available if there's other things that come up. But this was just our proposal. Now, if you look at that list, there's a number of things that, that you could, could look at as well. That includes anything from paying for long-term treatment to funding partially the, the Dicks Crisis Center. So there are some other opportunities for funding. But what we're asking for council to do is to consider these as, as, as an option. And if they have some other direction for us, let us know, and we'll work to finish that resolution. The way the process will work every year is that we will come back to the council, and we will present a resolution each year. And then the council will decide what of those areas that they will fund. This is one-year funding. Next year, we would have to come back and say, for example, we would give the outreach $10,000. We might ask for that for the next year. That'd be totally up to council. So there's, like I said, there's another, of, of other options that are available, and it's, it's whatever the council's pleasure is.
Mayor, we would utilize this, as Chief said, through the annual budget process every year. So we present this back. But this requirement, as Chief's mentioning, is to make sure that council visits this every year to look at the use of the funds, as we said in our previous discussion, to allocate those funds according to the need in the community. I think that gives us great flexibility. And that's why the proposal, it doesn't include the full cost for this year, but it allows us to get into the use of those funds and to hit some of those needs that we've already seen in the community.
I'm particularly glad to hear you say something about, you know, those leaving Dicks, because one of the biggest challenges, or maybe it's not the biggest challenge, but a huge challenge has been losing people out the back door. We've said, you know, they, they come in, they have help for three days, and then they're released out the back door without support services, and we, we lose them again. So any part of that that can help fill that gap.
And one of the things from the COSAP grant that we've discovered is we, we're, we have a contract with UNCW to provide evaluation of our opioid strategies. One of the things that we're seeing is, because of the length of time it takes to get somebody from the, the back door of the Dicks Crisis Center, it's about five or six days into any type of treatment, is, is where we start to lose some of those folks. Because we look at every single overdose death in the community, and we look at those factors that, that contribute to those deaths. And what we're seeing is, from our standpoint, part of it is that gap between the back door of the Dicks Crisis Center or in the beginning of whatever treatment, whether it's outpatient treatment or whether it's inpatient treatment, it still presents us with a significant challenge.
Chief Yonero, who is responsible for collecting the data on the individuals that we're servicing with the opiate funding?
So what we would do is probably change our contract with UNCW. We have that through the, through the COSAP grant. And we would add some of these things to that, to that grant, so that they're evaluating that as well. It's currently a comprehensive process.
So currently, we don't have any data?
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am. We have plenty of data that's coming from the COSAP grant. Remember, the COSAP grant, we've had it for three years. We've had some peer counselors that worked for the Dicks Crisis Center. So we have a lot of that data. They, they evaluate the, the fatality review team. They provide us with that data, and they provide a comprehensive report. And so we've, we've had three or four different, three, three reports now that talked about where we're at and how many overdoses we have in the community. And, and that contract is for the entire Onslow County. So we see where we're at, and we see some of the factors that contribute to those overdose deaths. Because remember, we have more overdose deaths than we do homicides, fatal car crashes, and suicides combined. So we're continuing to look at those things. But, but that would be part of the process as we move forward with, with these funds as well. Because they're, they're very much interrelated.
Will you be sharing the, that information with council?
I'll be glad to share the, the most recent report with you. I'll, I'll do that tomorrow. And because it, it is very comprehensive. It is, it is a very interesting read when you start to look at those factors that impact the overdose deaths in our community.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Chief? They're asking, asking us to consider the resolution that's attached to this agenda item to approve this for distribution and administration of the settlement funds.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here, not all in favor, say to five to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, too. That business, item number eight, that's a budget discussion, Mr. Ray. I think we've been here for an hour, it was two minutes.
Two hours.
Two hours. I think everybody's probably got ready to stand up a little bit. So they need to take, take a pause.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mayor. So we're here with the regular meeting. So we had the special meeting last week. We talked about some of the FY24 budget items, sent out the staff summary just to council. We're at a place now, Mayor, where we're here for your questions. Any kind of clarification, anything moving forward? At the May 16th meeting in two weeks, we will also have some other items, but we'll have the public hearing scheduled for the 16th for the budget. And then we're still on schedule for the consideration of the budget at the first June meeting. And so today, we have our team here. Actually, Sabrina's not walked up here yet to the table to answer her questions, but she's on her way, I feel that. But we're here, Mayor, so we're at question time, so ask away.
With the proposed budget speaking about the, where am I looking? For the pay raises, the 5%, is that 5% plus merit, or is that?
No, ma'am.
Can you clarify? Because some workers are thinking it's a combination of several things.
So what the 5% represents, it's in the budget now, it's already included in the numbers, is merit and market combined. And so the merit is, is the separate rate based on the employee valuation. The market is based on what we foresee as a combination of factors. And that's the number that we say will be, begin July 1. With that first pay period, that market will go in. And that market rate comes from the reports that we're getting from HR that show us what our, our regional market, how it's fluctuating. And so we've got an update that we'll send out by email next week to council that'll show you, show you some of those indicators. But it, both of those numbers are together, Dr. Washington. The merit and the market are all together. So the max for the year in 5% will be the budget in that. And that's, that's something that we've already applied to the budget. So in theory, at the end of the year, the full 5% may not be utilized, depending on how we implement that. So once we do the market, July 1, we'll have that portion out to the employees to start the year, and that's to keep our pay plan moving based on those market factors. So those are combined, yes, ma'am.
Wait a minute, say that again.
Which part?
Okay, so roughly, with the five, with the 5%, the 5% is, specify that again, please.
So let's just assume that we utilize 3% as the market rate. So the market rate of 3%, we'll apply that to all employees on the first payroll in July of the fiscal year. So theoretically, then that leaves us 2% out of the five. The 2% will be utilized for the employee evaluations. So we utilize that 2%, and we look at the evaluations. Let's capture the evaluation as you can, you can score 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. 1 being, you're probably not gonna continue working for the city anymore. 5 meaning, you're an excellent, high-performing individual. So at that 3, the 3 scores will receive a merit increase of, let's say that's 1%. And then the 4s will receive a 1.5%. The 5s would receive the full 2%. So anyone scoring a 3, 4, or 5 will get the merit increase based on their evaluation. So that gives that max of the full 5%. And so we want to follow that market indicator up until middle of June, and then we'll develop that full strategy. We'll advertise that strategy back out to the full staff. So to this point, we've talked about this, these numbers with the directors, and the directors have shared some information. But we're not doing any, anything until council gives us the go-ahead. Then we'll push out the information, and we'll go through it with all staff so they understand where we're at with this year. Because it's a different process than what we've had before.
Are we anticipating any of our staff to have ones or twos this year?
I hope never. That's, the, the, the concept there is, based on this year. Remember, we, we changed the employee evaluation this year so that we could have what I like to call a trial run or a practice run. We utilize an updated employee evaluation form, and then we've discussed these evaluations with every employee so that next year, everybody has measurable goals to improve, so they're at the 3, 4, and 5 range. Our goal every year is to have everyone operating at a 4 and 5 capacity, right? That's what we want it to happen. Typically, it does not happen, and the scores this year showed that we were spread out between 3s and 4s. The majority of our employees were at 3s and 4s. So that was good. But we've just got to continue that employee development to maintain that level. So I hope we have zero ones and twos next year.
Did I understand that the Boys and Girls Club will be brought back up at the, the next meeting?
Yes, sir. So even individually now, one of the concepts is, so I want to clarify that. Based on the email I sent, Boys and Girls Club has requested $50,000 for next year, 25 from the Neighborhood Improvement Services process that they went through that we discussed earlier, and then 25 from the general fund. So to maximize the $50,000 to help them both with their after-school program and then to take them into the summer program of next year. So you were right, Mr. Warden, they did say the 25. And upon clarification, they said, hey, it was 25 in addition to the other 25 that they were already in process for, in Tracy's application process. So theoretically, if that can either be considered now, or we can consider it in two weeks, whichever way. I, I think it still falls in line with what we talked about before. Their outreach program, as I said earlier, is another opportunity for us to partner with an existing partner for an area that has not been served in recent years. And so from our, from our perspective, I think it's an awesome outreach opportunity for us. And it's the same program that council gave a blessing to previously in the year, but they're working to get that facility up and running. So I, I think that's a good outreach for us for next year. And we could, Dr. Washington was asking earlier about, when people go through Tracy's processes, we have an application period, we have an education period, and we have a follow-up. Anything we do outside of that process doesn't include those items. So for new partners, we need to find a way just to get them in that track so that we can talk to them about how they request funding in the future, so that we can talk to them about reporting, and to make sure that if there's any requirements that we have, that's our educational piece. It's a formal grant process, in theory, that we would operate. So the, the good thing about the Boys and Girls Club is, they already operate with, as a partner of ours. So they know what the process is. So anything outside of that would just be from a general fund allocation.
I have another item that I wanted to, just to bring up, this, just something that you sent the council, Mr. Ray, a couple of months ago back. the counsel, Mr. Ray, a couple of months ago back. I don't, I just want everyone, if you would, to really pay attention to page 2. I don't want, I'm not going to say anyone's name. I'm not going to put anything, anyone's business out there like that, but.
You want that?
This is what I want to bring up, just for counsel. When Mr. Ray sent us this email, there was a change in our staff members with regards to, with our directors in terms of their new pay wage. But what I wanted to highlight is that if you turn on the back page, I don't know if anything could be done about this. I don't know if human resources need to take a look at this, but when you compare the former salaries to the current salaries, you're talking about individuals who received anywhere from a 3.7% pay raise all the way up to a 21%. A huge gap. It's like many disparities is here. Out of the six, you have four that are men, who are now all making six figures. However, two are women, but even with your women, one has a master's degree and only received a 4.6% raise versus her male counterparts, who are receiving more with less degrees. So I don't know if anything can be done, but these are some startling statistics.
Mayor, if you don't mind, so one of the things you see here, and when we look at these numbers, we do pull them out of the vacuum. Part of the review process that was completed last year that counsel engaged in is a full market from entry position to the top positions. And so this shows some of those positions and the differences. The good part about it is, we reviewed individual positions and the pay plan. It doesn't say that we're not going to go back and review them again, and so part of the ongoing process that the HR team does is they'll review out these positions to make sure that they're scoring correctly. We do this often, and so we're continuing to look at them. I wouldn't say that there's going to be a significant change with the directors from scoring from last year to this year, but we consistently review positions, and we'll look at them.
Yeah, because when you have someone that can make a 21% jump, that's a huge increase.
It is, but that's a smaller salary on the page. It was part of the differentiation is because it was an effort to get to equitable in the market, and some people were farther behind, some people were closer to equitable in the market for their job.
And some people, degrees are not as high as others and are outpacing others, so.
That merits more than the jump difference, because the jump difference is due to where they were to start with versus median for their job. The degree needs to be calculated into.
That's a big disparities, even for individuals that don't have degrees.
But it's a.
Is making more money than people who have degrees.
The biggest jump is a female with the lowest salary, so it's kind of counterintuitive.
No, it is not. I believe, no, it is not.
Yeah, I think, Mayor, you know, we're constantly excited about that conversation in terms of ways to improve pay for all of our employees, right? I think that's the biggest, one of the biggest actions I think this council's taken in a long, long time was this last review process. So anything that we can do to make sure that we're taking care of our people, I think you're going to see more and more of that this year. When we talked about defining the need and reviewing the operations, part of that is, when you're looking at the market, to make sure you're comparing that employee's operations to someone else within the market. And that's part of this ongoing process. Even though we had the allocation last year and the updated pay plan, it doesn't stop there. If we were to stop at that point, and if you don't bring these things to our attention, if we stop, then I guarantee you we'll fall behind. So I'm really excited about the quarterly updates that we do with HR and finance and bringing the information back. Rest assured, we're going to continue to review these positions, both on a large scale and individually, because if we miss something, then we want to make it right. And that's all of our position. Sometimes you're going to see markets change for entry level, for mid-level managers, for directors. We're going to consistently review those, and that will be part of our goal for the year for FY24.
And not only that, you know, your staff members, they talk. You know what I'm saying? They talk.
We encourage them to talk.
And when someone can say, you know, my qualifications are this, but I'm making this amount of money, and someone else says, well, my qualifications is this, and I'm making less money, where is that disparity? There is a gap that's there.
Well, different jobs have different qualifications. I mean, I have a high school education, I'll have a college degree.
But you can also make the argument that for the men who are getting paid higher, is that men's work? And for the women who are getting paid lower, is it women's work? So where is the equity in pay? I'm just saying, it really needs to be looked at, because there are some big gaps that are there. There are some big gaps.
But you're not talking about the same positions, you're talking about different positions. That's.
But a director is a director, is a director.
All departments are not people in their responsibilities. I mean, you can't compare a police chief to.
The parts of records are totally two different, separate things.
But it didn't used to be.
I don't know if that used to be.
There are some big disparities.
And the basis, the basis is still focusing on that market. And when council agrees upon that market, then that's where we got to tie it in. And that's why I say, it doesn't challenge us to review things based on the market. That's where you're at, is we look at the positions based on what the market indicators show for the same job in our defined market. Not in a vacuum of, we compare it to this person here, this person here, although that happens often. So that's where our dialogue happens, where Mr. Massey and I could have this dialogue and talk about it. Same thing happens with other employees. So we just need to capture that, the intent of the improvements counsel have made, and continue to review and just not miss out the opportunity to review. We're full board buy-in on that concept.
I have a different question. We're ready to jump. Mine is a calculation question, Mr. Brady. On pages 98 and 99, I think I know the reason it's different, but I want to make sure I'm not crazy or missing something. You have, you know, funding at the top and expenditures at the bottom, and in the grant section, the $49,350 from the opioid grant is not in the subtotal of grants requested, but it does show up in the expenditures, of course. Is that because that funding is already secured and not being requested? Do you know? See what I'm talking about?
What page you on?
Page 98, 98 and 99. On 98, the sum, subtotal of grants is $1,781,000, and on the bottom, it's $1,808,000, because that $49,350 is spent, but it's not under the requested subtotal. Is that because it's not being requested and it's already in the bank? Or is it just the tabulations?
Yeah, I think it's.
Page 98.
I think they just.
Just got missed? Okay. Sorry. Sticky note. Good luck catching them all.
that have been made from council decisions. We'll update those items into the budget document, and then, as Mr. Warden said, we'll revisit a couple of those items, one being the Boys and Girls Club request, for the meeting.
How many vacancies do we currently have, Mr. Ray?
That's on that HR report. I think when I looked at the HR report the other day, I was thinking total organization, we were at 27, I believe. And that fluctuates, you know, Chief Yanero and the PD has roughly eight or nine of those, maybe, plus or minus, just with some, and those are some of the new positions. So we were at 27. We could be up to 30 or down to about 25, but I think effectively, some of those positions are actually positions that are funded, but that we've not moved to fill. So, for example, Terrence in IT has a position open that he's looking at, a reorganization. So he has an open vacant position, but doesn't want to fill that yet until he has the org chart defined. So I think there's four or five of those positions that we've chosen not to fill, but we still have those vacancies. We're doing really good. When we were down at the league meeting last week, a lot of this conversation came to Mr. Jackson, Ms. Edwards, and I about how are we doing on staffing, police department being the first question, fire being the second, and then overall. And our numbers, percentage-wise, are better than everybody we talked to at the league. So I think collectively, based on the actions of counsel and the efforts of our teams, I think we're doing, I think we're doing really good.
I don't know if I missed it or not. Do we still have our position for the assistant city manager?
We do still have that, and that's one of those ones that it's vacant, we're not advertising yet, because, you know, part of our strategy has been, we need to figure out what the organizational chart looks like for all of our departments. And I would tell you that at this point in history, although we're not looking down the road like we need to, at this point, our focal point has been effective over this eight months. There will be challenges at some point in the future, because I can tell you, not everybody's going to continue working forever. And so we've got to figure out what that strategy is, but we don't like to talk about that. We like to encourage people to work as long as they can, so.
But right now, everything's working as it should.
That's right.
But that position being filled, which is saving the taxpayer money.
And we're talking strategies for what that's going to look like. Again, at the meeting, Ms. Edwards and I were in a session, and I was talking to her about the strategies that Mr. Massey and I've talked about for what we're trying to do moving forward, and how we're going to fill those roles. You know, previously, when we had a deputy manager and assistant, we diversified those responsibilities and duties, just like you see in every department. We have to figure out that strategy before we go recruit the person. You don't want to do it backwards. You don't, you can just recruit the person because they're that great, but you've got to be able to fill that need. So I think that's part of our strategy moving forward.
Line in the bench.
Yeah, cherry picking.
Training people and scouting.
We were in a discussion with the City of Chadburn about their challenges. They've been trying to find a manager now for about 16 years. City of Chadburn, 1,700 people, and they've been going through this process forever, because it's a challenge, and they're trying to find somebody, but they've had trouble defining the need. And so anyway, that's why part of our process is figuring out where we need to go, and I know Mayor's been involved in this discussion with, figuring out what our needs are and where we're trying to get to before we find those peoples. We still have, we still have the next meeting and the following meeting, Mayor, so I just encourage that if we don't have the specifics here, email us, come in and talk to us, because we want to answer all those questions as we move forward.
I can't find where it is in here, but I had a question in the.
Fee schedule.
Fee schedule, thank you. All of the increases, for the most part, appear to be fairly nominal, with the exception of solid waste and some of the things where we made pivots to make it more of an enterprise fund, a true enterprise fund. But I saw one in here that I literally cannot locate, and I've flipped through these pages three or four times. It said something about someone who had a failure to secure a permit would have to pay a fee equal to the permit, and it was a fairly hefty charge. And my question was, has that been the policy, $7,550 or something like that? Has that been the policy all along? Is that new? Is that commercial residential, where everybody falls in that?
So I need to find this specific, because so what we have a lot of times is, but generally speaking, if we have a permit fee and that fails, then they have to go back through that permit process, because the fee's designed on the staff time to review the permit and to issue a permit. So if they go back through, then they go through that. They don't pay a fee for denial, they pay a fee to go back through the process. Now, sometimes we'll see a different number. It's based on if their request is in similar, then we give Mr. King the ability to lessen that fee based on a similar application. And that's something that's with inside there, but if you find it, make sure to highlight it, send it to me, and I can already tell Mr. King's looking for it, too, so if we find it, we'll send that out.
It's hiding very well.
We'll send it out to council in general. There aren't many new fees here. What we've tried to do is remove some of the fees. I mentioned the fire marshal process, and combine those into one user-friendly fee that may, typically, they might have had three processes they need to do. We've tried to reduce that, so it's all into one with one fee. So if we can inspect things at the same time, we would prefer to do that instead of having two and three visits for fees.
Page 10 in the fee schedule is talking about false alarm fees. Is that commercial? I can't see that.
It's commercial, not residential.
Yes, sir.
Where's the residential rate?
Well, typically, we don't have a false alarm fee for residential, so.
But for police, we do for police, but not fire. So that's only fire on that fee, so the police only be with the.
Our fee schedule has grown.
Mayor, every time you give us a new thing that we get to inspect, we add a fee to it.
What page, Sabrina?
31.
Bottom of that page, Mayor.
That's the alarm.
You can't see it.
The book is easier in this case.
All right. 31, you say?
Very bottom of the page.
Oh, got it, okay. All right, so alarm permits, okay. So false alarms are third through the fifth is $50 and then $100. So I have 10 or more alarms, that'd be.
What was your question again, Cindy?
Mayor Ryan, Ryan found something on page 23 that maybe Ms. Edwards was talking about.
$7,500 for a, for a new telecommunications tower support structure substantial modification, $7,500. Was that it or not?
Page 23.
I may have read it incorrectly, but when I was reading through it, it struck me as it was a penalty for not getting a permit in the first place.
There is, if you did not get, if you did not get a permit, there is a penalty. It's usually double the permit.
That's what I read, yeah. I was just curious if that was SOP, had been there before.
That is SOP.
On page 30 of the fee schedule, Mayor, the last paragraph on page 30 says that failure to obtain permits will result in a fee waiver being voided, and the penalty of a double fee shall apply. And so that's not redlined, so that means we've already had it within the fee schedule.
And most communities do the same thing. You miss, you don't get a permit, they charge you double.
Yeah.
Plus they don't like you.
There's got to be something.
And you make a habit of it, they get real tough on the inspection.
Yeah. I would imagine there's a little bit of grace for ignorance where it's appropriate.
We usually give, because we also have homeowners that they're supposed to pull permits that don't know.
Right.
We give everybody kind of a one-strike deal, and we write their name down on a list, and tell them, look, you need a permit? If you're not sure, come ask us. So we always give, you know, somebody the benefit of the doubt once, and then we kind of keep up with it.
I must be on your list. That was the reason I asked. We were working with an electrician and did not realize we needed both electrical and plumbing for what was happening at the moment, so we found out and fixed it when we found out, but we didn't know as homeowners. So we would have been, you know, double penalized had that been, you know.
Put your tree.
Ironclad. It was an honest mistake, we just didn't know.
The guy you hired should have known, and he should.
He did about his half, he just didn't help us with the other half, but, you know.
And the legislature's been making all sorts of changes to what we're allowed to charge fee-wise, and when you have to have a permit. So, I mean, it's a lot of change in laws to where it's hard for us to keep up with, so they may have felt that they were good underneath a new law, and, you know, they weren't quite that way. they were good underneath a, a new law, and, you know, they weren't quite that way.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's great, Mayor, we'll, we'll bring back the updates to, remember, the Boys and Girls Club and the updates. Any questions before the end, please email them to us so we can, so we can process it, that over to you and get you a feedback on it.
By the way, Senator Elizara was introduced and had passed a Senate, Senate Bill 200, which removes municipalities and county government from having required legal notices published. He mentioned, it's like I said, it's passed the House, the Senate, but he figures it's going to have some trouble in the House. If you're interested, I'd suggest you write to your House Representative, Mr. Plaguegland and Mr. Shepherd.
That's one of the ones we've been tracking, Mr. Bitter, based on our publication, that's where they started with it, when the publication reduced, that the advertising creates some challenges, so.
Oh, and you weigh the, weigh the amount of subscription with the local newspaper.
Yeah, it's not effective.
Means of communication have just changed. Print, printing a newspaper is no longer relevant most.
Okay, let's, let's have a motion, Senator.
Want your one sitting moment, Mayor? If you don't mind, I've got some good ones here, Mayor. So Station 4, the, the beam raising, this is very exciting, if you've not driven by and seen Fire Station 4 moving, those guys are incredible. Chief Yanero took me by there yesterday to look at it, and what you see right here is, the firemen were signing the beam, and then it was Faith Fountain and Derek Jerry, I believe, is who got to...
Gary.
Oh, Gary, sorry. Got to put the final beam inside of the tower for the tower component, and to see this in person is phenomenal, so I encourage you to go check it out, very exciting. It's Chief Tomlin down here in the bottom left, I can tell by the picture, but this is something I want you, everybody in the community, to check out, because we're going to be so proud of this project when it's finished, and the firefighters are going to have a, have a new home, so check it out. If you go by, if you need a hard hat, let us know, we'll hook you up, but it's, it's beautiful to see, and as you can tell, those are future happy smiles, because they're going to get a new location. Yesterday morning, we had the law enforcement torch run, super exciting, because we're able to raise funds for Special Olympics of North Carolina. You recall, we talked about this early on the year from last year, we did an amazing job, officers from all over the state, they do the different legs of the torch run, our team ran approximately 7.2 miles, I can't tell you if Chief Yanero went the full 7.2 or not, but I can only assume that he made it at least another 20 after that, because he's working out all the time, some reason he ended up with the torch as well, so he handed it off. Be very exciting to see, this is our officers being involved with members of our community, and the torch run is greater than we are, right? It's, it's a much bigger thing than just us, some people had a happier time than others, and they, they like to pose. Definitely the sergeant there, right, is very happy to be in the picture. So it's exciting for us to, to have this opportunity, the bus behind, just in case some of our people needed a little break, not Chief Yanero, other people needed to take a water break, so, or to, to keep the torch going, so very exciting for, for our team. Arbor Day celebration, April 27th, we had the mayor and multiple, multiple members of our team at Northwoods Elementary School. Arbor Day is the national celebration of trees, us being a, one of the longest-running tree cities in the United States, I think we found out we're second, and we're probably not going to be first till that city stops being a city, so we're excited to be there. You'll see multiple members of our team, Smokey the Bear there as well, being a part of the awesome celebration, multiple city staff members being present, the mayor presented the, read the proclamation that day for the students, and it's awesome for us to be active in the schools. The more we can be active in the schools, the better we are as a community, because we know that we're creating that direct connection to our kids. This is actually planting the trees, so the students were out planting the trees, and every year we continue to plant, because that's what we do as a direct connection, as a Tree City USA. And then the last thing we have, Mayor, we have, we celebrated the senior games. This is pickleball, and if you've never seen a pickleball tournament, I encourage you to go, because this is a fierce competition, this is fear, more fierce than ping pong at the Olympics.
Pickleball master.
Get a paddle, go check it out, don't play with these people, because I went and checked it out, these two on this side, if you know these people, I hope they're your friends, because they're very active and aggressive, and so if you're on the other side, it's a, I would say it's a cutthroat game, but the senior games, multi-sport, multi sites, multi craft for adults 50 and over, there are more than 20 sporting events, they cover everything from billiards to table tennis, to pickleball, to running, there, there's multiple exercises, we had a goal of 200 participants this year, and we passed that with 298. So if you think about it, we're, we're growing our sport of recognizing different opportunities for the community, pickleball's just a great thing, because you have a lot of people in, but, ooh, look at this, table tennis, anybody that covers that much ground on that side, I also encourage you not to play those people, because those people are really, really good, and it's just impressive, you know? This gentleman here, on, on the far side, the red shirt, Melanie Marzett told me that before he lost the use of his legs, he was an avid table tennis player, and he was the best. After this, he's still the best, it doesn't matter, he's still that amazing, which is, which is incredible. But it shows you, we talk a lot about providing activities for our youth, we provide activities through our recreation team across all ages, and that's our goal, is to, to be active, to, to have community groups together, and to appreciate all that we do. Bishop Smith's wife said tonight, she got excited about all that's going on in the community, and I told her, she doesn't even know all that's going on, she needs to come and hang out with us some more, because we have so much more going on. The construction projects are great, the activity we have, we appreciate you guys being out in the public and with the community, but we're going to keep pushing to make things happen, because I think our citizens are excited to see more and more, and as staff, we're downright getting, so we'll keep it coming, Mayor.